Really?
I call the county school board meeting. Order of July twenty-six, twenty-seventeen, eighteen oh-two. Like to welcome everyone. All board members are present. Motion to approve agenda.
I'll make the motion.
The motion is second.
I'm second.
Sonia's second. All favor, six, five, say aye. Aye. Five o'clock, Mr. Terry. Public comments? Here or none, moving on. Board member comments?
I'll see.
Boston? Your son?
No, I have no.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Murray?
I'll reserve mine until right before closing.
Moving on to new business. Award of copper printing management contract.
We're still recommending going with the mom. Copier. Proposal from last week. And if you have any questions, you got representatives from mom here to answer for us.
It was totally, it was gonna have a twenty thousand dollar savings. It's like insurance companies, where's it come from?
Well, there's bigger savings than that over the course of forty-eight months. But what we've done is, on my last contract, three years ago, was extension of the contract to work in three years previous. We use Kentucky State contract for all our pricing. What has been different in this go around and what we're seeing in our marketplace is what we're able to provide to county schools is better than state government pricing. So, the rates that we're able to come in at, we're able to get our vending managers, they need business as well, but twenty-five percent under state contract. So there's a substantial savings with the new contract moving forward. And then, we're also implementing some additional software. The potential for savings is even greater. So, you know, with the vision that we put in place, we don't believe that you've lost any functionality whatsoever. We actually gain some functionality by adding some pieces of color equipment into the environment. But we're gonna control that color equipment with the software that we're recommending as well. We've been able to utilize the software at a number of different county schools here in Kentucky. Most recent basic county schools, over the last two years, have saved over twenty-five percent of their total print spend. So this is something that, you know, I've worked with six different county schools here in Kentucky. The vision that we put forward for you is what a lot of other schools are already implementing. A little bit of change in mindset from where we're coming from, but I believe that it's the correct direction to go. We had a question proposed to us last week, that can put together a plan for additional printers, if teachers, if anyone needs. You know, our goal is not to take away functionality from any of the staff. So we put a plan together for y'all that will guarantee that pricing, we're an authorized HP provider. So we have two different printers, black and white printers, as a need basis. Principals decide that any staff does need additional printer, we have that pricing for you, we brought that in, and can show you what would be the services printers. The main thing is that we're going away from the high-cost devices. You know, the school district has devices that have been in place for one on ten years plus now. So the cost of service of devices are substantially higher than what we're able to provide. But we're also pushing, and you know, the theory behind it, is to push as many of the prints to the lowest cost twice possible, which definitely are the copiers. The copiers that we're writing under contract for the district are point zero zero three, three tenths of a penny. The cost to print to a printer, today you all are spending probably over three cents per print, the staples pricing. We're offering two different options, one at a penny zero nine, and one at a penny one zero one three. So, to be able to print to the copiers at zero zero three is a savings that the district is, I mean, that's a hard savings, that's a real number. So, we brought the additional printer pricing for you guys today. We wanna make everybody happy, we wanna give everybody the tools that they need to be successful. But I hope that you all are happy with the new contract.
Pennies per print doesn't sound like a lot, this is just for the folks in the audience. We make over three million copies a year in this district. So when you take pennies past three million, it becomes a real savings.
You had said, you will see a substantial savings now and a substantial savings on this software. I know you can't speak of the software, but what is that substantial savings now? If it is a hard number, there should be a hard number on it, man.
There is. So, depending on, for us to put a hard number on it, we have two options. We have thirty-six month lease, which is what you all are on now, and a forty-eight month lease. It just determines how long that equipment's gonna be out here before it is refreshed, okay? So if we were looking at that twenty-nine, or the twenty-nine hundred dollars that we're proposing for a thirty-six month lease, you all are paying thirty-eight hundred dollars a month then. So if we're looking at...
So, just so we're clear and I'm following you.
Absolutely.
You're proposing twenty-nine hundred dollars, how old?
Her month.
Okay. And we are paying currently thirty-eight, how you said?
Thirty-eight with your overages, yes.
Last year, we paid thirty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars out of our general fund for copiers. That was just copiers, no printers, et cetera. Next year, the estimate is thirty thousand six fifty. That's what the budget's done on, annual cost, thirty thousand six eighty, don't worry.
And we have increased the number of images that are included into the monthly payment over the last thirty-six months. Without a plan to try to save on print savings, without the software to help determine where the prints are being made from, what we're doing over the next, let's say, we have that number of six months in, over the next six months, how are we gonna make sure that we're inside our allotment? Right now, you have no failsafe to make sure that you're not hitting these annual overages. It is just on a whim, where are we at at the end of the year? So, you know, I believe the savings, even with Travis's numbers there, at the end of the year, the district pays an overage, okay? It is the same rate as the base rate, but it is directly related to how many images you all print. Without their getting the software to help control some of that, it is a shot in the dark of where you all come in.
And I get what, and that brings a bell with me when you say control. I don't necessarily, I mean, we are a school system and we do need more copiers. I'm not saying nobody wastes, but, you know, the last thing I want to do is tell my teachers, we need to start controlling everything you print it, you know?
We're not gonna control where, what we're, what we're doing is, let's say, like, right now, I wanna print twenty of something. I push it to my printer sitting there, it costs, what'd you say, three cents a page? We can set controls on there that say, instead of printing to this local printer where it's costs three cents a page, we can say, if you're gonna print twenty or more copies, it has to go to the copier. Because that's the more economical, efficient way. So that's, that's the control he's talking about, is, you know, not really what you print, but where you print.
And in the software, it's never our intention or the intention of the administration to control the amount that they print. But it is very beneficial to have people and for the teachers to realize that as well. You know, if we have a math teacher, third grade, and they have the same curriculum as another third grade math teacher, and one is doing three times the amount of printing that the other one is, it just gives us the opportunity now with that tracking, to push, you know, what's going on? Why is there three times the amount of printing coming from this area than this area?
So you're, so you're saying different printers are gonna be different costs?
I'm saying...
From what you just said?
So all of the multi-function devices that you've purchased, and we're putting fifteen additional devices in, the district doesn't have now, they're just using single function printers, okay? So like, to give you an example, all of the cafeteria managers just have a single function printer right now, but they're paying over three cents per copy or per image, because they're buying all the consumables and everything else. There's no maintenance agreements on those today at all. With all the copiers, we have a blanket agreement where a cost is point zero zero three, three tenths of a penny. So what we've done is, we've replaced the copiers that are replaced today, added a color option for copiers, so we can help eliminate some of the high-cost color, single function printers. And then we have fifteen strategically placed desktop multi-function devices. So all the cafeteria managers are gonna have their own now, multi-function devices that they'll let them copy, print, scan, and fax.
At least it could be in their office?
It is.
That's my office.
Yes, ma'am, so... Yep, so all the cafeteria managers are not only gonna have their own device right now today, you only have single function, you can only print. Well, with this plan, you're gonna be able to print, copy, scan, and fax directly from your office. And same with strategically placed in some of the computer labs, or in other districts, if we had special needs classrooms where they could not leave the classroom, even on their planning period, whatever it is. But I think we've put the correct, correct equipment in place to make everybody happy.
My concern was just, we, all day long, have so much stuff that we have to do. All day, just, you know, different times and everything, and my concern was them running all over the district to get their job done.
Can you explain a little bit about how the software works? The way I understand the paper cut software is, I can print something and say, print it. And I can walk to any device in the district and print it out from that device, so...
All the devices have the embedded hardware, so all of your main copiers from schools, right now, there are two in each school. We have one right outside here in the board office here. So all those devices that have the embedded software, if they want to send a color job over to the board office, they can authenticate it with their teacher code and print it off here whenever they want. So functionality, it gives them some added functionality. And then some of it has just been a mindset, and it's a different way to do it. Right now, today, if you go into any of the schools, when we do our walks, there's a basket, literally, a basket that they've designated by the copier for wasted prints. Because if a teacher sits in their classroom and hits print, and they're gonna print ten documents, it spits out at the copier as soon as you hit print. So we're moving to where you have to authenticate and print it. Each teacher, it gives them the ability, so if they have twenty prints, they have five different print jobs that they've set.
It adds security to student information. They print out an IEP or something with students, social security numbers, et cetera, and it just lays up there all day long. Anybody can pick it up and walk off with it, versus have to walk up there and authenticate, print it out in your hand, and walk off.
Absolutely, there are multiple benefits.
You just answered one of my questions, and I've got two more questions for you. Color copies cost more on black and white, correct?
About eight times.
Okay. What happens if somebody don't select, don't want his prints, makes select colors?
To determine?
Yes.
We preset them all to be gray scale, black and white. So they're defaulted black and white. You have to specifically go in and select color, through the device or through the printer.
That's the way, that's the way this one's set right now.
And then it defaults back.
That's the way this one's set right now, it's set default.
So you've got a area that everybody's using the printer. Say, Mr. Crawford, here's print label, I can just spray it in my hand, I'll print A four or something. How many different?
Paper options?
Yes.
We've done two additional things on this contract also. And what I brought, what someone passed...
Thank you, understated. My question is, does it mean somebody would have to go out there and change the paper every time they wanna print something different?
So ninety-eight percent of what school print, create, and apply eleven options, of others such options, all the copiers we're proposing, main copiers, are A three format, meaning they have the capability to print up the ledger documents, one by seventeen. These copiers actually will print up to twelve by eighteen. We outfitted all these copiers, so as far as available options, we put large capacity trays on the machines for A three by eleven. So instead of getting your normal five-hundred sheet, you guys are getting tandem twelve-hundred sheets. It's what I've seen in school districts that is the most, that makes the most sense, because that's the most amount of paper that they use. So I believe that the equipment is, is set up well.
As far as, like, another question, since you've said that, I've got the, uh, security on those printers. Say I'm printing, say I'm printing paper checks and stuff, what keeps somebody from coming back in, printing off?
So, the devices are equipped with hard disk, uh, hard disk drive security. But what the real problem is, is when the devices leave the district. So in our proposal, we're wiping all of the hard drives free of charge when we ship your equipment back. Okay, some companies don't do that, but it's really, they can't print off, but if someone were to get that copier in their hand, and somebody was smart enough, they are, to access the hard drive, and then print documents that have been saved on that hard drive. So we have a document that we provide to you all, we need to take the responsibility to clean away those hard drives before we send it back to the police.
So how many copies do we have on?
We're budgeting three hundred thousand.
Okay, and it looks like three hundred thousand, that's what you're budgeting for, so any overages is almost four cents a copy?
Overages for black and white are still point zero zero three, there is no penalty. Now...
It says that here, though. It says overages point oh oh three six.
That's right. Are you looking at current contract security we're proposing?
That's what it's only a hint. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh four, four cents is the color rate.
Is that a fair amount for that's what you have?
Oh oh three? Yep, black and white is zero zero three, three tenths of a penny, and color is at zero four, which is substantially lower than the state contract.
Does that number sound right? I mean, is that a good number, three hundred thousand? I hate to have to go over and then have to go back and say, okay, we're moving on, because...
That's, that's where it gets down to managing that paper cut, making sure we're not printing overages. We're trying to push, especially at the high school level, trying to push more people to do paperless, through the Google documents, sharing Google spreadsheets and that kind of stuff with Chromebook. So we should actually have seen a decrease at the high school level last year, the number of paper copies because of the Chromebooks. We did. So this will help us move that process along, try to get people into the twenty-first digital age here.
I may have heard you wrong earlier, Mr. Huber, I thought you said three million, so it's three.
For a year.
You've been doing about three million a year.
Okay, so that's what you based this off of, very clearly.
Three hundred thousand per month. So it means... Based on monthly payments.
We still make monthly payments.
Three hundred thousand.
And then once a quarter, they've been billing us for overages. You've been doing it once a year, right?
So, yeah, so we moved, uh, three years ago, and for schools, it's absolutely, absolutely the way to do it. If you stay on a quarterly basis, or how we'll break it out on monthly allotment, and then looking at how to fill you any overages, schools are unique in the fact that there are definitely are times of the year, you guys are about to get hit here in September, you know, August, coming back to school to do more prints. You know, there are definitely times of the year where you traditionally have a higher print volume. Not all companies, but we have done it for our schools in the last seven years, since I've taken over the education work market in Kentucky. Run an annual over, and it allows you for low months and your high months to average at. And it gives us, you know, what the software basically, right now, all we can do is sit back and say, okay, this many images came from this many printers. Can't do anything about it, it is what it is, and move on. Well, now with the software, it gives, it gives the administration the tracking ability to figure out where they're coming from, what times of the year they're coming from, would we like to put a limit on some of the printing to make sure that we're within our budgets? Which is completely up to you all, but you have the capability.
So if we go, just kind of clarifying on my sober, you're going over the amount of copy that we make over the year, or if we're over three hundred thousand in that month, we get overcharged?
So, so if you were gonna get charged for months you get over three hundred thousand, it would not be a good thing, because you would definitely get hit, like in the months of August, September, you'd have to pay. The months like July, that you're not hitting three hundred thousand, you would still be paying for it. By doing an annual overage, it is an average at the end of the year. So, what you really have, instead of three hundred thousand a month, it is three six. You have three point six million for the year. However that comes throughout the year, that's what's allotted in for, and we need to try to stay within that number for a month.
Right, so there's gonna have to be some sort of measure for what we're putting in place.
That's, that's what the paper cut does. The paper cut allows us...
That's what the paper, is, so you guys manage it, or does the school system?
We have solid, we train, but it is a recording program that we've already demoed to the, to the school board, that they're using in administering where those images are gonna come from. It's not for modern office methods, it's not our place to tell the district where those images need to come from.
Yeah, and I think it should be later, before this is turned the key on, and Mr. Huber, I think you've, you've probably already got a plan started on how you're gonna manage the principals, maybe saying, hey, you know, we've got this many copies coming up this month.
Ms. Lawrence is planning on pushing out a monthly report to them, so they look at their usage coming out of the bill.
So we can automate a report, we can push to each principal, and we can even go departmental based upon how you guys want to see it. But another reason why we went for the three point six billion versus the three billion, which is what we did last year, is because we also brought visibility to the print space, that was an audit spot for the district. So we did a physical inventory of all your printers, and quantified those in terms of the monthly expense, which is something that nobody had an understanding of, because it was purchased by teachers on asking basis, of which we determined you guys are spending roughly nine hundred and thirty dollars a month in just toner to fulfill the prints on those laser jet flights, of which we've now determined with Michelle, which devices we were gonna eliminate. So we physically mapped the environment and made sure that we weren't losing any functionality like in the cafeterias. But we're now using paper cut to help drive those images to a more cost-efficient device, and making that program so it is all-inclusive. So every one of those devices on the contract's printing at the same amount. So we're then eliminating the buying power of the teachers to say, you know, making a subconscious decision that this device prints at four cents, this device prints at three mils of a penny. We're now making that simplistic and eliminating that buying decision for the teachers.
So, so with this system, is it, is there higher money that you think is what, than what we have, or...
So there's a portion of the business that we weren't managing in the prior agreement, and that is surrounding the printer fleet, of which, when we first came to the meeting, you know, that was part of the initiative from Travis, was to kind of quantify what that expenditure was. They, they started to have a little bit of an audit, but really, it's, it's a physical inventory. So we went around and pulled configuration reports off of every single device, and then received the consumable pricing that you were spending at the Office Max Staples, wherever you guys were purchasing from, of which, of the seventy-five plus devices that you had, you had thirty-plus make-in models. So that means that there's thirty different consumables to mirror those individual devices. So there was no consistency across the board. So where I may have an HP Laser Jet twenty fifty-five, and you have a forty two fifty, if you ran out of toner, you couldn't say, hey David, can I borrow your spare, you'd have to go buy another one. Those expenses were not being audited, and they were not being budgeted for, because they were coming out of the general fund.
Yeah, I get the standardization, I really like that. You know, you...
And those numbers aren't in the savings that we're looking at, about a digital nine hundred dollars a month, that you are spending on just the consumables for the printers. You know, that's not even...
Michelle, the paper they've got in front of them, Michelle estimated that the school's printer, about ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars per year on toner, printers and that kind of stuff. So that, that's when you said, you know, total savings is twenty thousand dollars, she's figuring that cost.
Enjoy it, okay.
So, yeah, so that cost actually gets us written in our contract.
All right, so I'd like to go back to the forty thousand dollar savings in that, because, you know, one of the things I like to see as a measure, to have, say, you said you had twenty-five percent savings at the other schools, what kind of measure would you have to place this to justify that?
So we got those numbers directly from the school board, just in paper box as well. They save an entire semi-trad load of paper that they bought with the print reduction that they were able to accomplish. And it wasn't, we're not letting the teachers print what they wanna print. And there's something that, that happens when the teachers know that possibly their prints are being looked at. And are they printing truly what only they're supposed to be printing?
The other savings is this, I mean, like, I sit back in my office and I type up a letter, and I hit print, and as soon as I hit print, I realize I had a missed field word in it. So I fix the missed field word, and I hit print again. And then I realize, crap, there's still something wrong, and I printed it a third time. Under our current system, there'd be three copies printed, two of them wasted, right? Under this new system, I can walk out there and go, first one was bad, delete it, don't print it. Second one was bad, delete it, don't print it, just print the good ones. So there, right there, we've cut the cost of printing that one letter to a third.
And, and that's part of that unforeseeable savings that we were talking to. So at the end of every single day, we were, or we can set it up power if we'd like to see it, but it's basically going into queue against your unique identifier. So if you sent seven jobs to the device, and all of a sudden you only needed three, and you deleted four, that four is a quantifiable failure, because otherwise they wouldn't print it anyway. So we're physically gonna take those measurements, and they get sent back from the monthly, from the form of a monthly report to Michelle to say, you know, we, we saved thirty percent on our jobs because they were not physically printed.
We're printing the errors, we're just printing the, is that?
Right.
So you brought up Michelle quite often, and that was one of my questions too. So in the IT department, how much more work, or how less work is actually put onto our IT department using your system?
So, and I'll answer that, because I've worked with Michelle and, what was lady's name?
Kathy.
CIO.
Kathy White. It's her before.
Yeah, before. So I, I've worked with those CIOs. And what their responsibilities are today is management of all the printers. With all these different printers that are out here, and all the different models that they're responsible to help keep on the network, which is very important to the security of the school also, but it is a, it's a daunting task, open service tickets, and that will be taken away. The software reporting is automated, that's why you pay for the software, instead of manually doing these reports that we don't have the information to print. So ultimately, I think that on this go around, us being able to eliminate ten different models of printers, that it should re-up our performance.
Well, that's, that's exciting too, because...
I see it kind of as a trade, because right now, she touches every purchase order for printering in this district. So even if she's, now she won't have to touch those, because all these ones are you guys, but she is gonna have to monitor the reports, talk to the principals about, hey, you know, you're, you're doing way more than what we think you should be doing, and talk about how we can reduce that. She'll have to be doing some training, especially at the first... Now, she'll have to be doing some training, especially the first year, probably, with teachers on the, um, paper cut software. So I think we'll leave out the first year.
And it's not an easy job, but really, you know, when you're looking at what you pay a person like Michelle, and in, in her position, with her capabilities, would you rather have her protecting the, the security of the network and working with the principals to help figure out how to reduce costs? Or purge, or, uh, processing toner orders?
Well, that's, that's where I'm going, because, you know, uh, lady, her skills, you know, if that takes some of that time that she spends in our current situation, and that opens her up to better things.
I, I think that absolutely there could be a lot more positive things you could do, the processing toner works and.
Just a general summary, color, color, going through, with color printers in the school systems, depending to the printer's sector located. When teacher gets print, it's automatically defaulted to black and white at that point in time. If it's bold printing, it will project, uh, built in.
And it changes up.
Or if it's something for me, it'll stay with their printer.
For color, we're only offering color copiers at point zero four. So the only thing we have to do now is manage that color, is manage how much each teacher really needs in color. Do we need to set limits on it? But absolutely correct. Everything that prints is called a black and white, you'll have to select color, make sure that that's what they want. And when they walk up to the copier, like Travis said, it makes so much more sense, because when you're just hitting print, I do it in my office all the time too. I print a, a ton of ones. To have to walk to the copier when you're, you have to walk there anyways to do your job, but when you select it, it actually thumbnails that print job up on the screen. You know what? I don't need this one print. I need these three. I sent this down four hours ago, but I don't need this one. I'm not gonna print.
What was the extra calls for a printer if we need some in different locations?
We have them here. We're giving you two options.
Okay.
So, uh, hook rate, uh, and cost, what would cost on a per click basis?
Per click.
Per click, per, per copy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And another really cool feature about having that print queue is since there is two copiers in every school, if there is a huge line, because the teachers are beginning of the day, and, and they're, they're used to waiting twenty, thirty minutes to receive their job, they now have an additional option without having to go back to their office to send that job to another device, because it was all built within one queue. And if Travis says he has a, a, a meeting at the high school and he pushes the print option, he gets all the way to the high school and notices, I forgot my job, he can simply just release it at the height of having to come all the way back to the board to receive his job.
I mean, I can certainly think this, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per person that needs an extra printer, you know, how many are we going to need is gonna be the big question, because that can drive up this twenty-nine hundred real quick.
Mm-hmm, and we, we took all those different scenarios into consideration when we mapped it. So when we physically plotted every single device on a map, we kind of went through the scenario as to what teacher is using and what for. And then we quantified it based upon the number of prints that they were actually doing. I mean, there was, there was devices that we sold that did on an average two prints per month. So from a convenience factor, I mean, two pages to have a device that, that costs three hundred and twenty-five dollars just doesn't make a lot of sense.
You guys printed that used to be points out of every, we did render that, we do that, right?
Correct, and we've, we've got that listed here, by serial number, by device, so the nine hundred and thirty-six dollars a month that you were spending in toner.
So I, so I have a question.
Sir.
Moving forward on this, because it seems like we have a lot of questions, and, I mean, this, this poses a big red flag to me as far as how many devices. I would like to know how many devices am I gonna need in this district before I said yes to nine, so to speak?
Uh, you, we've already mapped it. I mean, we've already worked with the principals, we've worked with the.
And we did. Well, I, I've gotten a lot of complaints on different areas, so, I mean, that, that's where I'm at on it. You, you know, where, where, where are the extra ones at? I mean, so you're saying, I, I know this food service director asked about her, her scenario, so you have a printer in each manager's office?
We did.
Okay.
And we've gone over what, so what we did, that not a lot of companies do, but I kind of sound official, uh, in high schools, especially when you're dealing with people that are gonna be upset, teachers are gonna be upset if they have a bunch of kind of cable. We met with each individual person, and where it made sense, like for the cafeteria managers that can't get down to the copiers and need capability, we gave them more. You know, this is, we're locking this price in for you, if a one-off or two-off, uh, you should not allow every teacher in your district to have their own printer. It doesn't make sense. The cost is, the cost is too much.
I, I can agree with that, but at the same time, I wanted to make sure managers, office personnel, you know, I mean, there, there's a lot of people, what, like people write checks in this office, you know, they gotta get up every single time and go to the printer, or are they getting printers?
The checks have their own check printer.
Okay, so they, it's gonna stay at their printer.
Absolutely.
Or at their office.
But it means the specialized.
This, we were asked to come up with a cost on a one or two-off basis, that somebody absolutely takes that request to the principal, it makes sense to the principal, and they need a printer. So we're able to lock this cost in.
What type of printer is that for three twenty-five?
It's an HP Laser Jet black and white printer, which needs to be duplex capable and network capable. It has to be network capable for you all. We have printers in this right now that are not network, which means they're not supported by the district, which means that it is a secur, uh, it is a security risk to have those printers in place that are not networkable, because there are no standards in place that, that security software that the school district, uh, has in place, because they're not on that network. So this plan is networking all devices, so everything is gonna be able to be controlled by the district, which is a must. It needs to happen. All the places that need their own printing, we've done that. That's where the fifteen devices come into place. The fifteen LD two-twenty's that are listed are for all one-off situations that somebody would need their own printer. And it's a, and it's a multi-function.
And those aren't new placements. That's not adding functionality. That's saying, we identified there's three users here that have printers today. We've increased the capacity of the device to handle those three users based upon proximity to their copier, but just consolidated to be within the same page string of that double three.
My, my only other question, and this is probably a little off, but, you know, in, in our last meeting, we had made a motion to have investigators come in. If, if at some point we see, and this was for hiring practices throughout our district, uh, this central office could potentially be a, a area of concern for investigators to look through the printer. Is that something the printer could be taken from here when you do this? And somewhere it could be stored to wait for us in order to get that answer from them, what they want to do?
So really, what that would be is, that would go to your, your school district's department. Okay, so the lease, the, the equipment is leased. And investigators are gonna come in, from what I hear, the question, if I hear correctly, you're asking me, can they, can they access and take the, the device for investigative purposes?
No, I'm saying, you're gonna switch this printer out, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't want that printer to disappear until investigators know whether or not they would need to get into that printer to find out who's printing all of it.
So here's how that works. The end of the lease is coming up, okay? It actually expires in September. So we have a month to get new equipment in, and it's ran full term. If you want this equipment to stick around, you're gonna have to pay thirty-six hundred dollars a month for it to stick around until you figure out who investigates what. And that's just a, a contractual, legally, that's how it works. One printer would cost me thirty-six hundred dollars to stick around. Not one printer, but that's what the contract and what encompasses. We could give you a breakdown per printer. If you wanna pay per printer for an extra month, so it can stick around, I'll give you that cost.
Is that when, when the existing lease ends, I don't have a copy up here, does it go month to month, just like this proposal?
Absolutely. State and local government is handling what we're doing for you all, as it goes through month to month.
All right.
That's what Mike's here.
Absolutely. So what would be, so you're gonna take that one copy's percentage of the thirty-six hundred dollar a month bill? If you need to pay, I mean, i- i- if you need to keep that one around, we'll give you a cost of what that one needs to stick around for an extra month.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, I'm, I'm just still a little fuzzy on the, on the measurables, but it sounds like you've got some good, a good system that, that can kind of keep us up to date on what that spending is, maybe not on the monthly, but maybe quarterly basis to make sure.
We can do it now to, to a daily basis. The software can do as granular, gran, granular as you want to.
Yeah, I'd really like to see that twenty thousand at the end of the year.
Absolutely.
And that's what, uh, my expectation would be.
This, this is compared to what you're coming from.
Or you could just go ahead and give me twenty thousand now. I'll put it in the bank, I'll hold it for you.
But, but the contract from what you all have today, with no measurables, I mean, you want more measurables. Without the software, there are none today, okay? There, there is no way to determine where, where the prints are coming from. All I can determine today, how many prints that one machine made, not who made them, not, not anything else.
All the technology you're talking about, how long has that been out?
The technology's been out, uh, University of Kentucky has used Paper Cut for, I believe, the last six years. Now, one of the things why Paper Cut is such a big, uh, uh, National Guard user here in Kentucky, but, uh, it is the predominant software. We didn't go with a cheap knockoff vendor. I mean, this software is used, like I said, by University of Kentucky, Kentucky National State Guard. I have personally, uh, schools that, that work with it, and, uh, it's a, it's a top-notch software.
And, and just to follow up on that question, would you partly or no, with the next question to me, why wouldn't that have came to us last year if it's that big of a savings?
Well, we proposed it, and I have it documented, and we proposed it to Mrs. White. Um, I, I can't speculate as to why, but, but that's good enough. If you propose that, that I suppose might have been given.
So now on the, on the down machine, so the old service.
That was.
So what is generally your turnaround time for the proposal?
So our turnaround time, we've also come one additional thing, uh, that is a little outside the norm, but we're more than happy to do it. Um, one of the things principals have requested, is it possible to schedule your, your maintenance guys either between two hours in, in the morning or in the afternoon? Can we get our service calls done, which is a little bit of a unique, uh, request, but here's what's happened. While the offices, everybody's in the office, their parents are coming in, everything else, can we push it to, at the end of the afternoon? We met with our director of service, they're absolutely willing to customize a program for you, but we have a ninety-eight percent guaranteed uptime, but we provide that we track.
A single.
For the district. Why? We believe that's more important. Anybody can promise you a four-hour, uh, what they call response time. Most companies, I don't know if you've seen the mom vans that drive around, it's an expense that, that we have with our company, that they're carrying anywhere between twenty and fifty thousand dollars worth of parts onboard. Why? That makes sense for you all. They come, they're here to fix them. Anybody can come and say, this part's broken, I gotta order it from Chicago, and you're gonna be down for two days, but we responded within four hours. So our measurable is we do a ninety-eight percent guaranteed uptime, and that's what we commit to. And we're here, we're here to fix your equipment. We guarantee we're gonna be here within four hours, and we can.
Is that like twenty-four of it?
Nope, ninety-five. Hey, you fine? Right where we're at. Right where business at is, on the ninety-eight percent, uh, that we can book.
So you're pretty confident that you can sit in that same chair next, this time next year and really save this one?
Absolutely.
Just, just the plain contract, let's say, that's not counting the saving of toner cartridges and stuff, you know, saving maybe nine thousand, just on the contract. That's provided all of our printers, that turnaround equals printer savings.
We were told twenty thousand. Did that come from you?
No, that came from us.
What, what?
We gave, we gave all the numbers. We gave the numbers to, to these guys. And, and, and that's where they got their numbers from. We did all the investigative work, we did the walks, we, we did the quantifying what you guys are spending.
So now all the ink costs are gone. It's all rolled into the contract.
Absolutely.
So that ten thousand we spent on ink last year, toner cartridges, pre-toner cartridges and all that stuff, gone. So that's, that's gotta be ten thousand.
But that's assuming.
That we don't have a lot of overages, so that's what we gotta really work this paper cut piece.
Was, was that ten thousand that you're talking of, was that in that thirty-eight thousand you gave us in the earlier?
I'll take this one's up here. Um, last year, no, that was just our general fund expenditure. There might have been a few toner cartridges from maintenance up here, uh.
So that's just the monthly payments on the copiers, is what is the number that he gave you? So the other amount that we quantify, the nine hundred dollars you're spending on, on toner cartridges that are going away, that, that's an additional save. So, you know, twenty thousand, I, I'm assuming that was rolled into it. But I do wanna commend you all, or commend the district. From what I have seen working with other districts, right now, you have no color capability holding today on copiers. You're all subcontract. It's not like you're paying, uh, I've came into situations where they were paying too much. You know, they were paying an important amount. Your contract today as a district for other districts compared to your size, it's not like you guys are spending a bunch of money. Uh, but when we came into this, from what we've seen in the marketplace, is manufacturers are willing to go under what the state contracts are for. I mean, the savings that you guys all are having, but is that in addition over what the state contract calls for?
The only other question I have, and I'll have no more questions, uh, is, have we given the, any, no offense to you all, and I'll say your contract's no good, but have we given any other office printer companies a chance to bid any of this? Are we in the realm of legalness here, Mr. Crawford?
As far as I understand, we are. The only realm of legalness, I asked him off before we started the meeting here tonight, that if you commit to this, either thirty-six month lease or a forty-eight month lease at the price that got here, plus any overages, which we've had all this discussion about, and I asked him, which he tells me, if I heart understood his answer correctly, that although it's a forty-eight month lease that you would sign, it'll have language in there that we discussed at the last board meeting that you could get out of the lease if the district did not have the funding. In other words, I don't wanna see the district written up because you extended into a debt over a year. And, and schools are only supposed to indent themselves for a year. There's ways to get around that. He's got to have language in his lease agreement, and he tells me they've got, I'm sure they have, they've dealt with six other districts.
And we're always supposed to sign a contract a year at a time, but is that, will that language change?
To indent yourself, yes.
But nobody can afford, and here's how it works with Katie, I've worked with the Kentucky Department of Education for a number of years, the shortest term that we do with any of our schools is thirty-six months. I'm confident we can, we can keep the equipment running for forty-eight, but what, what the fairies refer to is a non-affirmation amendment.
That's right.
It's a state and local government amendment of the states. We can't hold a, a district or a, uh, government entity to any payment if you don't have the funds for it.
I have no doubt that we can't pay you, or we're still in that category.
I mean, a, and, you know, I've never, I've never seen that happen. I've never seen it where a district, uh, I think as long as you keep moving forward and you, you let technology help you, help you save money, uh, you just gotta be willing to accept it.
So the smart thing would be to do, would be to do the, the forty-eight, I mean, if we.
Yeah, if, with that language in there, that's cheapest route for the board.
To answer your question, we, we talked to four different companies about this project. Um, only two of them were willing to come in and actually do the work and walk through and count copiers, count printers, and, uh, so we had proposals from two companies that were recommending going for.
Our service tax, we're, we have a large market share, especially in rural areas. Uh, picked up Lewis County schools. The schools are all, the only thing that I, I support in Lewis County, but Lewis County, Mason County, City Williamstown, uh, Campbell, uh, we've got, uh, Pendleton, Bracken. The strength of what I see in our program down here is our service guys are from Kentucky, they're here. You know, we're not sending people from Cincinnati. There's companies out of Cincinnati that didn't even wanna come down and bid the job. Didn't even wanna come down and look in. But we're here, you know, we're, we're Norman products. We've been in this, uh, community for a long time.
Another question?
I would make a motion to award the copy of your printer management contract to, um.
Forty-eight month lease or thirty-six?
Forty-eight month.
With that stipulation.
I have a with me tonight.
I'll second.
Motion by Messiah, as you say it was a weak one, please. And a motion by Messiah, seven eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries by vote. Pay application number eight, amount of one thousand eight, one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars makes sense.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you all. And if you will, get the calls from, even if it's one printer, if we need to place, uh.
And if you will, get the calls from the, from the printer, give what you need to place this order.
Yep.
You all, I want that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just run these two, I think, so that the board on the basis, yeah, the pay application amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Bus garage change order number five, add four days due to weather and no extra cost. Run it together, go Jackson to the board.
I had a few questions on that, uh, on the bus garage itself, there's been many questions asked, and I, I guess, as you guys are architects, I-
Uh, Mr. Crawford, I need a motion on that, defining to, to run it, uh, number-
I really think you ought to do them separately.
Okay.
Frankly, because the pay application is a separate KDE document, and the four days that are entitled to by contract, it's been certified by the architect as they're entitled to it, that's one of the things, they do monitor for that under the contract. So they're really two separate items. Chad, Chad's got questions about any of it, you ought to ask them, we're here today.
It necessarily doesn't go inside with the actual cost of, of that. It, it, it came because we have asked numerous questions and have gotten no response whatsoever. Uh, has the superintendent asked you all any questions that came from this board?
Uh, I've not received any calls, I'm sure in the day-to-day interaction there have been.
We meet, we meet once a month, on Thursday of every month, with the architect, the general contractor, the subcontractor, whoever.
Our consultants.
The, the last time one of your gentlemen was at our board meeting, I specifically had asked for dirt numbers. Um, and, and I know this is going back, but I'm, I just wanna catch you all up why I'm asking these questions now.
It was Dirk, Dirk was still here.
I'm sorry?
It was Dirk.
I think he said Dirt.
Yeah, but Dirk is the guy.
Oh, Dirk, no, I'm talking about actual Dirk.
You said, you said you asked the gentleman, it was him that was here.
What was you the one to hear, I apologize, I did recognize you. Uh, did, did you ever not, did you just not respond, did you respond to that?
I did not. Is there a reason? It would be near a little possible for me, at the time you asked, to quantify how many loads were called.
And I understand, at the time I asked, but we've had-
With the contractor, didn't count the loads either, he just cut down the grade, put them up.
But you do understand, you charged, you charged a, a, a certain amount for dirt, and when I look at a number and I see a number versus the machines that was used versus the equipment which used, uh, I would imagine that you would go by an industry standard in that, when you come up with a number, would that not be correct?
Uh, let me weigh in on this, folks, um, uh, I wanna be clear about the expectations. Um, the contractor gives us a schedule of values, uh, the cost for pavement, for concrete, and so, okay. Um, I don't know that we would ever quantify the amount of dirt that would come in and out.
And, and I get, I get the specifics of, of if you want to get technical as far as yardage of, of dirt, okay? But when I see a huge number versus what actually got done and the amount of dirt that was moved, uh, the, the, there was a huge number gap there, from what you charged and put on paper when the bill came into us, that was broken down. Along with, and, and sir, I believe when you came on site this evening, I was sitting at the bus garage, and you also seen a child cut across the bus garage, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and the reason, I mean, is that an industry standard, are most of your, uh, construction sites, do you just leave those open? No safety fence around those? Because I know in the contract, of what you're billing me, there is safety fence caused in there, and I've got five pieces of fence back there blocking an entrance, so why, why would that not be up and taken care of?
Um, two things I have to be clear on, as your architects, uh, I'm not responsible for the job site security. So that is your contract responsibility, it's in his contract, the fence and secure his site as his expense. Um, I can't say what they have done in the past.
All right, okay, but, but let's not even talk about what they've done in the past, would it be an industry standard to, to make sure the job site is secure and safe defense around it, especially in a school system with children?
That should be his responsibility.
Okay. Was it in the cost? Cause you do, you do, you get those calls, and your, your job is to look through those numbers, because you did present us with that date, correct?
Presents you with a pay application each month, yes.
All right, and was, was safety fence in that cost?
I do not think so.
Would you have typically looked for safety fence in the cost?
No, because typically that's included in the general conditions and the early part of the pay application. So there's a lot of things that go into that, that would be insurance, fines, etc.
So you wouldn't have looked for safety fence and have did contract on a school system?
I would not have looked for a cost breakdown.
I, I, the, the reason for all these questions is, is as you see in this, that, that's, that's a huge issue, a child getting hurt on, on the site. There, there's lots of, I mean, obviously this is a very expensive building, and I have lots of people asking me, and I, you know as good as I do, I bought this all the way because one point nine million for what we got, and when, when, when we ask you specific questions and you can't come to this board and answer those questions, dirt numbers, I ask for a cost comparison, or a cost difference, I should say. You had lighting you installed, do you remember that question, sir? Is there a reason you did not get back to the board on that?
Uh, the question was, I recall, it was several months ago, it was why we went to LED lighting upgrade.
Not, not why we went to LED to upgrade, the question was, you charged me X amount of dollars, obviously when you put lighting in, you had a number on white, correct?
Again, I wanna be clear that we're not charging you for lighting, the contractor is charging so light. We are the architects that review their costs and say whether they're broke or not.
We do review their costs, so you have that number, correct?
The cost of the LED lighting.
Yes, okay, so is it hard to go back to the contractor and say, what did you charge me in this original bid for the lighting? Because I have a person asking what the difference is. If, if you said, I'm, I'm coming to you and the upgrade is X amount of dollars, I, it's easy for me as a board member to say, okay, this is what they charged me originally for lighting, this is what they're charging me now, is this a good, good value for the money? Do, do people not normally ask those types of questions?
If we didn't respond to a question, then I apologize. We didn't understand or weren't clear on what you were looking for.
I, I, and you normally, when someone asks a question and you're not clear on what someone's looking for, you don't call that person or call the superintendent, simply ask?
I can't speak to the specifics, I apologize.
You can't?
I can't speak to the specifics of that question from last year.
Okay, so, so you weren't involved, can you speak to the specifics of that question since you were involved?
Well, as Travis spoke, monthly we meet, we talk a lot actually, and we provided a change order that showed the difference to go to LED, which everybody approved, and we vetted it with our consultants who are paid professionals to do that, just to make sure that you're getting the right price to go to the LED lighting, so they did that. We also vetted, and we went over it in the meeting.
Yeah, I think it actually came back to a higher the first time, where we went back and hit the vendors again and said.
I, I get, I get when you say that, you took it to paid professionals and they vetted it, but I also can vet things if I ask you a question. And technically, your job or the contractor, if, if we're gonna push the blame back to the contractor, should actually come to whoever asked the question, answer the question. Whether the whole board approved it or not, I'm still a board member and I have the right to ask the question, because the cost is, is obviously going up and going up. I'll go to the next question, the metal roof on the building with the same instance.
I'd, I'd love to follow up, what is your specific question on the LED?
Well, the LED lights are in there, I mean, they're, they're, I mean, it was the difference, the difference in the-
Actually, I believe your question was, you questioned why we didn't design it in the first place.
Well, that was one of the questions also, that was a question.
Did you wait to know the, some kind of design parameters of why we didn't do that, which we did? And it was value, I explained that night, it was value engineered to go back to fluorescent lights, and the owner asked me to go to LED after the bid. So it was this original LED, over budget, value engineered, came back, had contingency, and we wanted to go back again.
So you're, so you're saying that was an item that came back as a value engineer?
Yes, sir.
Was you aware of that, Mr. Huber?
I don't know that specifically, we, we've changed so much from the original design down to the second design.
Now, I apologize, but the project managers that were working on that is, is the one who's seen that.
So we'll do our best, yes. And, 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 and the, the same thing with the lighting was with the metal roof. I simply asked what was the difference in that. I mean, I think you, you should understand that, that when I paid one point nine million dollars for a bus garage, if somebody originally started out as one point three, now it's jumped up to one point nine, and someone comes back later and says, hey, we, we, if you guys want a better roof, it's gonna cost you what? And I'm just going by memory, it was up fifty-seven thousand, I believe, for a better roof?
The LED lighting upgrade, the standing scene metal roof change was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty.
Twenty-eight, okay, I apologize.
I, I believe we go to standing scene, it was like twelve thousand and something, and the LED was fifteen thousand.
So you're saying the roof was only twelve thousand? Okay.
That was part of the original bid.
To go, to go to standing scene, have concealed factors.
The original bid, the standing scene roof was an option.
It was an alternative, we broke that price out for you.
And so when we decided to go ahead and do the standing scene, all we had to do was go back to the original ultimate bid.
And believe that's a change order.
Yes.
So, folks, um, I think, I'll apologize, I think normally when we feel like we're bringing back a recommendation on a change order and saying we reviewed these numbers, uh, I'll apologize if that wasn't a throw in that review for you. You felt like you were then providing our opinion of the price. As Mr. Huber said, before we bring these to you, we've worked on your behalf to make sure you're getting a fair price. And we'll go back to those subs, uh, and that contractor and say, you know, we don't think this is fair, take a look at this again, that number came down. Then we review it and then we make the recommendation. So we have reviewed it on your behalf and made that recommendation. If that wasn't enough detail, then you have my apologies.
Which is the same thing you do on pay apps, right?
Absolutely.
You review the work completed, you look at the materials stored on site, and you go to your-
So, so you, you do review work completed?
Yes.
Okay. Could you review the safety fence for me, cause that would be part of-
We're gonna bring that up tomorrow, absolutely.
Oh, okay, cause that, I, I already got charged for that, because that was on some of the first symbols. And, and the other question I had, and you had demolition, I'd like to know what kind of demolition was on that side? I wanna say it was a small number, five or six thousand dollars was in there?
I'd have to actually find that, but as you have these.
I was just gonna say we'll find that. Okay, thank you.
How many years it takes to pay for LED lighting?
It depends, I wish, uh, cause I have this conversation with all my school districts.
And I'm just asking, I'm curious, I'll speak your engineer.
I'll, I'll tell you, when we, I had somebody come in and give us some estimates on what it would take to do every light in the district and go to LED lighting and see what kind of energy savings. They were saying seven years, but I thought they were overestimating the savings, um, because they were taking a bunch of maintenance savings.
Right.
I don't know if there's gonna be that much maintenance things, so they were saying seven. To convert from a regular, I mean, to take this one out and put in an LED, they were saying seven years to take.
What's wrong with Mr. Crawford, that building, that they said, Carol County, with the JCC, maybe you put LED lighting in it, did they, cause they couldn't find the cost savings in?
I don't know, I can't honestly answer that question. I think the seven-year rule, based on what I know from being board attorney for Home Electric, is probably in the neighborhood of varies. But again, you know, the question of-
It's gotta be a cost savings.
There is a cost savings if you stick with long enough, it's all part of the explanation you just gave about trying to say, hey, everybody has a discipline of theirsself, it's not just the LED lighting that saves you money, I'm like Chris.
I just have a curious on that. Motion, uh, I'll make a motion to pay change order number five, or, or?
Eight.
Eighteen?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Three, two. Discussion actually, or, uh, bus change order five, add four days due to weather, no extra cost? Was there no extra cost on that?
And again, I would suggest that-
We weren't, this change order, typically they, you know, saying we're gonna add a window, it's gonna cost three thousand dollars. There's no additional work being done, they're just asking for additional days in the change order, so there's no overall costs.
So why they, why they asking for?
Well, uh, uh, to your contract, they're committed to reaching substantial completion date on certain dates. Uh, so all they're asking you to recognize is that in four days of this last period, they're higher than the average, because we look at the average spring, fall, and they do have enough days for it. So we found there were four additional days above average that they are entitled to per their contract. So they just want you to recognize that coming into the job, that beyond their control, there were four other days, um, they got to live.
In, in those contracts, I know the answer to that, um, do they actually ask us to recognize the fact they went there for a long time working and the buildings out there, not work, nobody doing anything?
Yeah, there was a dilemma, or delivery as you understand, with the metal building, uh, set. Uh, they've worked very hard to get it back on track, and they haven't asked for a two-month delay. So they're really just asking for what to do, as per the original contract. This is, I know, they've shown you the original substantial completion, further contract, which is tomorrow, and you add the weather days in, which you can do substantial completion, they could see that.
I wasn't on board or panel, we're on the contract, how many weather days? Was it, was Crawford, was it for weather days and I was?
Okay, look, just by way back to my question, the substantial completion date is the date that is put in the contract by which they are to complete the project. As indicated by the architect, there are paragraphs in the contract providing that if they have adverse weather days, and they're certified as adverse weather days, he's got, uh, standards that he goes by, and if they meet those, then they by contract can ask for those adverse weather days to be added to the substantial completion date. The key to the substantial completion date is that once they reach that date of substantial completion, they have thirty days under the contract to get the final punch list completed. If they don't, you have liquidated damage, damages in it. Now, I don't remember in this one.
Five hundred.
Five hundred, that, that's typical, that's what it was in Carol County, on that middle school down there, they got all messed up. And so that's the process. And so what they're asking here tonight, and your architect's here to answer questions about it, your question to him should be, are they entitled to the four days under terms of the contract? And I'm assuming the answer is yes, or would not have signed off on it, that they met the terms of the contract.
And that's what I was-
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I beg, there's really not a set number of weather days, it's based on your region. Um, so you may have a different climate, cause you're closer to the river than somebody else. So it's not even statewide, it's regionally what you look, so it's very specific to the area where we're building.
Sir, adding these four days, board approves these four, that'll take them to August ninth? Will that take them to August the 11th?
No, if those four days are approved, it takes it to August seventh. There's two more days that I'm aware of, if you're not, that's tomorrow, that would take, but I wanna make sure everybody was up to date tonight, that would take it to August ninth. So those two days will be presented tomorrow.
We're basically two weeks away from finishing.
Yes. And I received an updated schedule that says they will be done, uh, I put there August eleventh, which is two days after substantial.
What date do you anticipate, I mean, you walking through with a punch list?
Well, before the last meeting, it was hoping that I could do the change today, look at, or tomorrow, look at today, but they're not ready. Uh, so they have asked to do the punch list on August eleventh.
I'd like to walk through.
As the final, absolutely, yeah, as part of the contract you will be walking through.
So, so technically by, by our contract, anything after July's twenty-seventh, we would not have to offer any more weather days if they did not complete on August eleventh, correct?
No, sir, uh, just, you've already previously added some weather days by change order, and then tonight, these four, would take them to August seventh.
He's saying the eleventh, I'm confused.
Don't wanna ask, please, what does-
Eleventh is when, updated schedule, they just send you, they're saying they're gonna be complete.
Okay.
So that would be, uh, four days after substantial completion for the contract. So they, they anticipate being four days late. So they anticipate being four days late.
Okay, that's why I wanted to get clear.
But I do want, they've asked the two more days on this most recent pay application. We haven't reviewed that yet, we will, and we may bring that back and say, review two days, uh, at the next quarter.
And so.
But after the twenty-seventh, that, ours, our substantial completion date is the twenty-seventh. By the contract, we don't have to give any more days, correct?
You have to get the four weather days during the night. And there's potentially two more. What I'm hearing here tonight is that they should complete this project, substantial completion to be out by the night, now. And I have to review the contract, cause the contracts are written differently, but that could trigger two potential days. If they're not gonna get finished until the eleventh, that could do, uh, cause two potential liquidated damage days of five hundred days. I assume they're gonna talk about all this tomorrow, cause they've got thirty days from substantial completion to get that punch list done and get everything off the snuff. So there's, you know, the normal school project, you just want the project done, quality work done within the timetable. And school boards don't always hold the contractors who've had a problem of a day or two to the fire if they get the product they want. Again, that's something for the board to decide when these folks come back and give you the information on all that. I assume, and the board can legitimately ask that the punch list that's put together by Dirk and with superintendent walking along with him, you can see a copy of that punch list, it'll have on there what they expect them to get finished. And they've got thirty days, get that punch list worked out, and Dirk will come back and check to see if they did what they were supposed to on that punch list. Go and get a copy of that. I mean, my other school board did copies of that. And look at, you're looking at that finished date.
On the onset of this project, we were told we were gonna be able to follow this project all the way through with software and all this stuff. Do you remember that conversation? Were you involved in that investment? Does anybody else remember that conversation?
I remember the conversation, but I believe it was at, it was at Chain Architecture Firm or something, uh.
Well, the original partner charts were on.
Right, that's right.
Mr. Murray, I just, just to be clear, when a change order adds days, it changes the contract's eventual completion. So your current after tonight's fourth days, to by contract eventual completion is now August seventh.
Okay, so it is August seventh.
And you're gonna ask for two more days, correct?
They're asking for two more, I don't know if they're certified them or not yet. That's why I kinda put that down there in the summary of the past year, just, so.
So you all have to certify them before they can even get?
Yes.
That's right. And then they have to bring it to you to approve, like they're doing tonight.
My question is, when, can they pull the buses and their garages, start using it?
Uh, by contract definition, substantial completion means you're beneficial occupant.
That's right, per the contract, substantial completion is supposed to mean that you can occupy. You still have certain items that are not complete yet, but they're not to the extent that they deter your ability to use the building.
So that should be, well, there's a section of fence that's not installed yet, or paint this door jam, things like that. If, if the parking lot's not asphalt, if that's not substantial, we don't expect that to happen before asphalt, that's.
Motion to approve the add four days to do the weather, no extra cost?
I'll make the motion to approve the four added days to do the weather, no extra cost?
Have a motion, second.
I'll second.
All favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Two, three.
Mr. Chair, before, if I may, before you move on, I have.
What is the number?
What was the number?
Two, four, three, yes.
Two, four, three, yes.
Two, two, four, three, yes.
So it doesn't count.
We're not approving, well, the four today. Violation of contract.
Well, potentially, okay, potentially is, like, here's what my suggestion is. Let's work towards substantial completion. Obviously, we'll potentially have some liquidated damage, some argument, or potentially, maybe not. It's not approved, bring the two back tomorrow if it appears on the contract that you think it should be, deal with that at that time. Hopefully we'll get it to substantial completion by the eleventh. And they get done within the thirty, we'll see where we're at, bill board decides. But by the contract guys, just, as your board attorney, hope I explained it to you.
If they're gonna come back and two days asked, well, they might not just ask approval.
Well, because they're gonna, because he says certified the four, he's your representative.
And you're probably gonna certify that with two credits.
Do that monthly too, just so that it'll come to you in the project for sixty-some days or something, that's the thing, you know, and then you have to explain those. You do it monthly, so you can.
Right, but when you come back and ask us, just go ahead and ask for the second eight.
Which you could do, you can do that, is that a problem? If you decide to do tomorrow or are within the contract?
It's, it's not a problem, um, just, I think your board attorney is, and he's making you aware, per the terms of the contract you have with this gentleman, he is due those four days.
Right, and I understand that if you're gonna give him two more days, just ask for the six days all at once, get them approved. Because as we.
We haven't done anything wrong until the end of the contract, correct? And we don't pay.
Question, Crawford.
And here's, here, here, here's, okay, the architect is.
We're trying to push this along, if you see.
I understand your attempt to push. He's got a meeting tomorrow with the contractor, but the contractor, by the same token, depend upon what his temperament is, could say, wait a minute. I was entitled to the four, you certified the four, the board turned it down, they're violating the terms of my contract, they're in violation of the contract, I'm off the job. Now, I can't imagine that extreme a situation happening, because he still has money in this game, he's surely gonna finish this project. But technically, once the architect certifies that to you, that those weather days are, are entitled to him, it per the, that means, per the terms of the contract, if he were called as a witness in the courtroom and went down to the terms of that contract, he would say they're entitled to the weather day.
In all respect, I have voted no on this bus garage, every step of the way, because I wasn't behind it. This is what I'm going to do, I will make a motion to approve this again, if that's possible. I will change my vote, but I want it clear, the only reason I'm changing my vote is for legality of this, and that's the only reason.
What I'm gonna ask, Mr. Crawford, do we know, most likely you're gonna certify them two days, correct?
I, I can't say that.
You don't know that hard, cause you're gonna eat, there, there's standards in there, and they've gotta meet those standards. He'll look at the weather reports for those days, he'll look and see whether or not they're entitled under the contract to those weather days. And he, and you're paying him a fee to do that. And so he, when he certifies that, he's gonna be sure that he hits the marks. And that that contractor's entitled those days, and if he comes back and says he's entitled them, he'll, he'll do it, just like he's done here. This change order on here saying he's entitled to weather days, he's certified.
I'll be honest, I, I voted no, cause I always do, like I said, but I understood it is a legality issue, and.
It is a legality issue.
I, I believe so.
I have two more days to do this change.
But if it's going to be your same contract over and over, so Mr. Murray you mentioned earlier.
Yes, sir.
That threw, threw this entirety of this thing that they were supposed to be able to follow, um, was that you, Mr. Murray? Or the board followed?
The board, yeah, I mean, it is what it is at this point, yes.
Well, I wanna talk about, if that's in the contract, then the contract will follow it. If it was not, then it wasn't.
Well, it's not in the contract, okay, it's not in the contract.
If it was presented to this board, that, that, that was going to be a way of working with us.
It's not in this contract, right?
We're talking.
There's a motion.
I mean, I'll tell you now, but I'm, I'll just say that I'm disappointed in this bus garage, so I'll vote no again.
I made, I made a motion to go ahead and approve the additional four weather days.
Okay, we have, okay, I think we need a motion first, Chad, to rescind the vote on change order number five.
I apologize, I'll make the motion to rescind the vote on change order number five.
Have a motion, I'll second it. All favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Four to one. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number five.
Have a motion to approve change order five.
I'll second.
I'll sign the seconds. All favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Posters against, four to one, change order.
Because if we can't add two days, they have to come back and maybe.
I say, if you would give us two days, we'd be done with it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, leaving here tonight, I have two things you've asked us to follow up on. One is for us to talk to the contractor tomorrow about the scene of fencing, and your concerns about students being able to walk from the job site.
Obviously, it's about done, so give us to refund the money that the fencing was, okay? I mean, the project's done, correct? I mean, pretty close?
It's very close. Um, and I'll look into what was found. Um, and then what was the demolition number and what was included in it?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
That, that's fine.
I'll get these back to Mr. Huber. Does that work? Travis, will you distribute it?
Think you're also letting him know at that time, when he goes, you're all gonna ask for two more days. Gentlemen, thank you all.
Thank you.
If I could go ahead and give you the two days.
I appreciate that.
Next on the agenda discussion of fuel contract, uh, last month's meeting, we had a discussion on the fuel. And I had, uh, Mr. Huber ask Mr. Bowes to be here, Mr. Bowes, I appreciate you coming. I had some questions, I was looking over some bills on the fuel, and I was looking at some of the Opus rack reports. Do we get number one or number two diesel?
Sometimes you get number one, number two is an unbranded fuel, and number one is a branded fuel. That's the way it's brought to us. Apparently, there's been mistakes made on the way that was done. I'm not gonna say it wasn't, but I had a question for the board, is all of this went on, uh, the rescinding of the bid, apparently. The bid, we can't go back, I guess, last year the bid was rescinded when another company was awarded the oil, and we weren't, because we didn't make a complaint. Apparently, there was a complaint made to our board members while this was done. My question on to that is, why weren't we notified by the board member that did all this research? Which is you, Mr. Davis, did all this research, but you couldn't pick up a phone and call myself or someone from Southern Control Room and ask us to look over this with you?
Mr. Bowes, everything I've done, being the superintendent, communicating back and forth, I was under the impression that he was talking with you because he said something about having a meeting with you on it. And the questions that I brought up were several questions, why we was being built for number one diesel instead of number two diesel with the contract called.
Right.
Just like the, on this one month here, that I was looking at, on, you probably have your paperwork with you. On eight seventeen of twenty fifteen, we got billed. At two twenty-nine on number one, our rack average was one sixty-seven to one, F O, or out of Cincinnati. And then again, on. I believe it's, uh, eight thirty-one twenty fifteen. The rack average was pretty much the same.
I don't have each one of those that you're gonna go by, though.
These, Mr. Bowes, these are yours, that you turn in with the bill.
I'm saying, I don't have your, where you've got your pricing from.
Can I get my pricing right here from Opus?
Okay.
I've been all right on here, showing you today.
That's my question.
High lows and everything.
Where you got your, well, it's rack average, there wasn't.
Yes, sir, I've got rack average here, today's rack average terminal, uh, Cincinnati, Louisville, Lexington, rack average for Cincinnati today. It moved, uh, all day long, there was, uh, forty-three different pricing moves in Cincinnati a day, twenty-nine in Louisville. Twenty-nine, or seventy-five in Lexington from the close of the day. Permanent rack average today on, uh, when a lot of fuel was a dollar fifty-six five, ultra-low sulfur distilled.
This way.
Is, uh, on ultra-low's terminal rack average a day was a dollar sixty-one, rack high was a dollar sixty-eight. On, uh, number, that was on number two, on number one is, uh, two thirty-five, six-four for the day on average, two thirty-seven on high. And low was, uh, two thirty-three nine five. And that was for Cincinnati, and I give you lows for Lexington also.
No, we just did Cincinnati.
That eight fifteen, um, I'm sorry, yeah, eight thirty-one, is that the one you talked about, or is eight thirty-one fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you did use the number one.
Right.
On diesel, but it was underlined at that, yeah.
Right, yeah. And that's, uh, Mr. Bowes, and that's what I kept seeing with your reports, and I went back on here and looked, and then I called Opus. We got some other, uh, regular works there.
The pricing was that a way is because when we receive fuel in, as I talked to Mr. Huber about, when it comes in as branded, it's that higher rate than, that's the number one is coming in as, you know, you're unbranded with some oil.
I've got a question, Mr. Bowes, on your number two, which is contract called. Uh, what do you, what do you consider brand, what is considered branded?
Branded fuel is, uh, a company like Marathon, each one of those, if you go back and look through.
Marathon today was a dollar sixty-three seven nine, Marathon on number one was two thirty-nine eighty-five.
That, that's your branded price, what it would come in, that's if you have a brand from Marathon, you have Gulf, which we could sell, Valero or BP.
I've got all the pricing right here.
That's, that's the difference.
But the rack average, that's a dollar sixteen-one six oh.
That's on number two.
Yes, sir.
Right. I said there was mistakes made on the number one.
If I could, I'd like to interject here for a minute, just, just because I, I wanna be clear and be transparent. And I, I had a conversation with Mr. Bowes yesterday, uh, Mr. Bowes did call me himself, I did not contact him. The first thing I told Mr. Bowes, because I, I was told, well, we were all told as a board, that we were being sued by Mr. Bowes. So when Mr. Bowes called me, I, I plainly said, Mr. Bowes, that I could not talk to you, is that how I had a conversation? So, uh, in that conversation, there was, we talked about quite a bit, uh, I asked some of the industry standard, some different things like that. My, my question's here today, and, and I wanna go back on some things that was said yesterday that you would ask me, cause I, I want to understand the situation. There's been allegations made, uh, by, by you, uh, in asking questions, and, and which is absolutely fine. And I told you, if I ever got factual evidence, I would ask anybody the question or a meeting as I will, uh, no matter who it is. My, my, my question at this point, you had said to me yesterday that, uh, you did not know anything about the meeting last week, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so you would say, you would, you had made the comment that you, you knew nothing about this rebid process or anything?
Not until I got a letter in the mail, that I got a letter saying that we received a bid, and then I got a phone call from someone telling me that you had rescinded the bid, man.
Okay, and, and the reason I'm asking this question is, I, I, I'm trying to understand, because when I'm getting things from this side and I'm getting things from the other side, my job is to ask the questions and find out what's going on. When you said you did not know about the meeting, you did not know about the rebid process, Mr. Huber had came back into this board room when we were in closed session, when he came back into this board room, he had made the comment that we were being sued by Mr. Bowes. Mr. Bowes, have you ever said to Mr. Huber, you were suing us, or gonna bring suit against us?
That's where it goes back to the original, that's what I asked about the rebid. Went back to last year, on the oil that was bought from Apollo Oil Company that we never complained about, that was all into one bid.
Okay, I guess, uh, I just, I, all I want is, did you tell Mr. Huber you were suing?
I don't think I said I was suing anyone.
Okay.
The question came up, if I could say it, that, that's why you all went to the rebidding, because another person had approached a board member and said that you were liable for suit. That's the only thing that came up.
Let, let, let me get to where I'm going here. Mr. Huber, did you tell this board that we were being sued by Mr. Bowes?
I did.
You did?
Yes.
So you're saying that Mr. Bowes told you we were being sued?
I said they were considering bringing us in, yes.
Okay, and that, I, I wanna get where I'm going here. You came back into a board meeting after we were in closed session and said that. My question is, if you knew nothing about the meeting, did you call Mr. Bowes or did Mr. Bowes call you? What happened there?
When you, when you guys were in closed session, Mr. Bowes called me.
Said we was being sued. Was upset about the possibility of the.
Thank you for the question.
Losing the thing and that they were considering bringing suit because of.
You see why my question is, is going the direction.
And that's what I asked.
I want to know.
The other end, the other person was suing you is why I went to this.
Okay, and, and I'm getting there. I, I, I want to know if anybody else has said they're suing us on this. Is any board member aware of anyone suing this board over this fuel thing? Because clearly, Mr. Bowes asked me a question, and I'll say this right here in open meeting. Mr. Bowes asked me a question, if, if someone else is working with another supplier and they say they're suing, should anyone continue to talk? Because I wasn't going to talk to Mr. Bowes.
And he told me.
And I don't expect any other board member to talk, and anybody else that's going to sue this district. Because that would be Mr. Crawford's job to handle when someone says, I'm suing you. We are not to engage in conversation. Has any other board member been told that they're being sued or this board is being sued?
Oh, yeah, a question I brought up to Mr. Crawford was on subparagraph four.
Yes.
Contract?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford reviewed the contract, needed the contract, was not even.
Were not in compliance with it. And I, I did bring up, if you'll recall, that you're always subject to the lawsuit. Back and out of it going forward, either way, you get into litigation.
And I, I, I said to you.
I did not use the word suit, I'm almost positive, I said our company wants to look at this, I was told. And that there could be legalities in it, because the same thing happened last year and we did not do that. So if we were awarded the fuel bid and three days later, why did all this come up? If someone else didn't say, hey, we didn't get this the way this is worded here, why? We can sue, I didn't do this, but who did do this?
Okay, I, I, I will tell you, and, and as I spoke to you on the phone, and I'll say it in open meeting. If the contract wasn't correct, Mr. Crawford acknowledged the contract wasn't correct, is that right?
It wasn't, it, we didn't, we sent out a bid and under the terms of that, we didn't follow it. I'm looking at the provisions, which are highlighted here, and.
So either party could potentially sue us.
Yes, sir.
For, for, for the contract not being right. And as I explained to you, is why my bid was what it, why my vote was what it was. And I stand by my vote to rebid based upon someone saying a contract isn't correct. That is why I stood by my vote.
It's been this way for five, maybe six years, and we, in that bid, it says antifreeze. The school has not bought one drop of antifreeze from us in five to six years. There's not been a complaint made to this board.
Where are we getting someone else?
Uh, the last.
But that wasn't brought up, apparently.
It was the local vendor, last person I remember this.
And, and my question to me is, why?
Ever told us, or that, about antifreeze?
It's in your bid. That's what you're telling me, I bid something. It's in your bid.
Have you read the bid?
It is, it's in there. A, a reward shall be to the best bidder at the discretion of the board.
When I seen the, uh, when I read that, the same paragraph four, that's when I brought in Mr. Crawford's attention.
That's what I'm saying, it's gone on for five or six years, and now all of a sudden, after we were worth a bid that, uh, I believe it was Apollo Oil Company was awarded the bid last year for the oil. We were awarded the bid for, you know, fuel. Nothing was said about antifreeze because no one ordered antifreeze from me. And that they didn't come forward and say, we're gonna press a lawsuit against you because you got the fuel, we got the oil. But this year, something had to happen to trigger this.
And Hargis, let me answer what he's saying. Because he, it says gasoline, diesel, fuel, bulk oil and antifreeze will all be awarded together to the same supplier. So that's what he's talking about in the past, in, which I can't speak to, it may not have been. It's the first time it's been brought up in, in a board discussion since I've been a board attorney, that this has been brought out like this.
Well, Mr. Crawford, you go out there.
Yes, sir, I understand.
That language, that language has been in the proposal.
And, and I think he said that the last time, it probably needed to be looked at long before now.
I, if I could, I said that to one or two board members, which aren't here anymore. That this should have been changed. It was changed by a former superintendent and a former transportation director we had to guide it into this mess that it's in now, the way it's worded. And I've said this for four years, before this, that it was done. And those board members are gone, they're not here for the ones I talked to about.
Mr. Bowes, I did ask, uh, Mr. Huber for these.
Yes, he told me that.
Cause I went back and looked.
And I told him if he couldn't get them, that what? That I would provide them for you.
And then what I've done.
Said there was nothing done, delivered on any of those prices.
My, my question is, at this point, if mistakes were made, how big are the mistakes? Mr. Huber, you, you know the situation, you've been in contact with Mr. uh, Bowes. What's the number?
I can't put a number on it right now, because the only Opus sheets I have access to are the ones that are attached to the sheets that Hargis has.
Have you met with Mr. Bowes?
Yeah, we sat down and of the, of the sheets that are attached, um, I found two instances where we were billed for number one versus the number two diesel.
Explain, explain, explain the meaning. If, because this is my frustration, this, this is on my end, just so everybody understands. Mr. Huber, you admitted here tonight that it was your understanding that Mr. Bowes said he was suing us. Why are you going into a meeting with Mr. Bowes when in your mind, you said he's suing us? Why is Mr. Crawford not, was you invited to that meeting, Mr. Crawford?
As superintendent of schools, I get a lot of people walking here and saying they're gonna sue us. And I think part of my job is to protect the district and try to sit down and come to an amicable agreement to prevent a lawsuit. So we don't end up with tons of illegal fees.
So explain to me the con, the, the, explain to me that meaning, man. Explain to me what, 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 when you.
Most of it centered around him explaining to me the, the difference between number two and number one fuel. And I did not understand that difference. Um, it was all alluded to at the last meeting, that number one was actually kerosene.
Kerosene, you asked me that question. And it's not, if you go through those Opus prices, which, uh, Hargis can, it'll show you kerosene right on there, correct?
Yes, it's pretty much the same price.
Because someone else in the school system asked me the same question, is this kerosene, and it is not. It can be used as a diet kerosene, number one can, but it's not billed that away on there. But I told, also told you on the phone, Mr. Murray, when I talked to you, that I grew up in this county. I went to school during my whole life and I have, would, follow the same for my mind, would want to sit in the school, correct?
That, that is what you told me, I, I mean, but you have to understand my position.
I understand.
Now, I've got two different, but I.
Maybe he thinks that where I said if the other person is doing this, then our company might wanna do this too. It might have been the state of it, but I don't remember saying the word suit. I just told you that last night, that I wouldn't, you know. It would have to be something awful farfetched before I would sue the county or school I grew up in.
Mr. Crawford, in your expertise, you being a lawyer, would, would you recommend, I mean, when the board sends emails to a superintendent and says, let our attorney handle this. There's no reason to go into meeting, let, if, if we're saying we're being sued, I mean, is that normal for a superintendent to, to go into a litigation process?
Let's be fair, here's what, here's where I understood the meeting the last time. Somebody, Hargis should have jumped in and chanted, evidently don't recall this, but I understood that the superintendent, one of his suggestions was. That we invite Mr. Bowes here to a board meeting.
Yes.
And he brought up at that point that he would try to meet with him, he'd talk to him and see if there were explanations for. For legitimate questions that Hargis was bringing up.
The conversation was, if he threatened the students to bring him into closed session and talk about it. That's why we're not doing this in closed session, cause he's saying he's not suing us.
But I also thought that part of the discussion was superintendent meeting.
I never heard that.
I understood it, because apparently.
Did you hear that?
Did Hargis ask him, did, did you, you're saying that you asked him to?
I asked him to have.
Right, to contact me.
Come to this meeting.
No, I asked him to contact me over these prices.
I asked him to have you come to the meeting.
No, before that. You asked me about the prices, if he couldn't get them.
I asked him.
Okay, he called me on the phone, I'm going to Louisville, I can recall that.
Are you from?
Are you from, uh, Southern Petroleum?
I'm his, uh.
Oh, I wonder. Cause I called Southern Petroleum too, tried to get them to give me Opus sheets.
And the man that does that was out of town, and I said, I'll get you what we have. And I came up and brought those, I said, if you can't find yours, I'll bring two. He said, come here and look at them, I've got, we can pull up that.
So I, I guess my question at this point, if you're saying there's mistakes, we saw that there was some things there, you know, did you have a number?
No, I don't have a clue, because I don't know where these prices come from compared to where our prices come from. But what was, because it was, like I said, an honest mistake, we picked up ultra low sulfur number one, that comes to us as branded. We saw the ultra low sulfur number two.
Generally, the difference between unbranded and branded, or number two and number one, is number one runs anywhere, what I saw, sixty cents a gallon. I think yesterday it was seventy cents a gallon.
Right, and you don't wanna do that unless you cannot get unbranded fuel.
Right.
And sometimes if they go to the rack, they can't get unbranded fuel, they will bring us branded fuel.
So if, if you say, um, let's say it's sixty cents higher, you're looking at a thousand gallons, you're looking at six hundred dollars.
Okay, my, my, my question is this, you're saying you don't know his numbers versus your numbers or anything else. This is an Opus sheet that you, you supplied to the school system. Can you show me from my information, so I can sit down in my office and go through these sheets? What you charge me off of this sheet and what, by, and the industry standard?
I don't know if it's industry standard, but it is on here, right? This number right here, should have been underlined on these.
Which one?
Okay, go pick up, which one would match up, well, that's not my writing. Right here. That's my writing, it's number one, two, nine, compared to. What are the rack numbers, number two?
So you were charging, so on here, you were charging me two twenty-nine a gallon, and it should have been a dollar sixty-seven.
Yeah, we're going with the unbranded fuel which was picked up.
No, I, I, I wanna be clear here, I, I don't wanna do if, I, I want to go by what the bid could say.
Right, so the bid calls for that.
Okay, so the bid calls.
Calls for number two.
So you're saying a dollar sixty-seven?
The paper didn't say that, but when you read the bid sheet, it does say that. And on your line, when you go on your computer to whatever it is, it's not on there either. No, I'm talking about what the paper said, as far as, if you pull the paper up, saying your bid is eighty-seven unleaded. Which doesn't say either if it's eighty-seven RFG or RFE on unleaded.
I wanna stick to diesel fuel, because unleaded is, is not as much, I, just so my understanding. When I pull these Opus reports, if I go, I can call Cincinnati, I can get the same Opus report.
If you pay for it.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know no, nothing about that. I made a phone call and they give it to, that's not normal, they wouldn't give me that over the phone?
Uh, they shouldn't.
Mr. Murray, I did, I reviewed ten, ten Opus sheets that were attached to ten bills from last year. Of the ten, eight of them billed us at the number one price instead of the number two price. That was on eight-eight and eight thirty-one.
So eight out of ten.
Eight out of ten were billed at the number one price versus the number two, but then it says.
But, but, I, I, again, this is your sheet.
That's my sheet.
So, so you're saying when you billed me, this is what you billed me, but you actually should have billed me this.
Right.
And from now on, when I look at an Opus sheet, this right here, rack average, not high, right, this, this is coming number two.
Rack average.
This is what I need to look at.
That's what would be.
Okay.
If we go, well, never mind, if it's branded, we need, that was misinterpreted by me.
Okay, and, and I know I keep going back to this because I think it's a good question.
Right.
Is that industry standard to go by this price? Because there's other prices on these sheets that I don't understand.
There's not an industry standard if you're going by Opus prices.
I, 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 I have a hard time understanding.
There's rack prices, there's rack prices, which I get, which is called an average cost of what fuel is in the ground every day. Say you get a load bid at two dollars a gallon, you get another load at a dollar a gallon, that's averaged out of a dollar and a half. Okay, that's what you're talking about, is that's the understanding.
For a second here, put yourself in my shoes, cause I'm just trying to make sure that this is done correctly, okay? If you're in my shoes, looking at a sheet like this.
Right.
There has to be an industry standard, because we can't just take a number off.
Well, you mean, that's rack average, is your industry standard.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's.
Yeah, that's their.
So any other oil company that looked at my bid.
Oil company.
Which my, our bid sheet calls for, number two.
That's where I was going. And when it comes to our bid sheet, that, anybody that would bid us, cause that's what I have to look at. Anybody that would bid us, this is the same number they're going to go by.
What I'm saying, the thing in the paper does not say that on it either, the way it's written.
It says on the con, can you read the contract, what it says?
That's the, what I'm talking about the bid?
Yes.
But the ad you've got in the paper posted is not, and on your site on the internet, that my daughter pulled up last night, it's not on there that way. It just says eighty-seven unleaded and ultra low sulfur.
So you're saying even, so that gives me all, more reason why you should have pulled the bid. You're saying our ad on the website is not correct. The ad in the paper is not correct.
I'm not saying they're not correct, well, they're not matching with this.
And this is the problem, all this needs to match, and if we have a.
Same antifreeze bid should have matched.
In the last meeting, I wasn't making accusations, I, we was trying to understand, I was. Because when I can sit here every day and look at Opus, and what he was trying to tell you, Chad, on the one. Since this morning, uh, say for instance, uh, for Buckeye. It moved three point seven cents from this morning to this afternoon. So, cause this updates every minute. Marathon moved two, uh, two cents. Uh, KMPH moved one point eight one cents.
Right, it changes all day long, they do, but you get one copy a day.
Every minute.
If you run yours, you know you get one copy a day, unless you get it that day.
But on these sheets, what I could do, I could go back on this, it'd look okay. Like, uh, from last night to this morning, it moved, uh, five point something cents, I think.
It doesn't specify in the bid, in the ad, but the bid sheet they fill out specifically says.
Set it on.
Number two, low sulfur diesel. You get to pick Cincinnati, Louisville, whatever.
But you circle that, you understand, once you stay with that all year long. If you don't jump from one to the other, that's why we circled that. You can't say we're bidding Cincinnati and, uh, we got fuel from Louisville, we're using that price, the way the bid is.
Okay, is that what you're saying to me right now?
Right.
Okay, because.
The one I circle is the one I have to use, where it came from, like Hargis pulled Cincinnati.
Okay, I, I, I wanna go, I, I wanna stay on that subject there for a second. Because the superintendent came to this board, and I believe it's even in email, if someone else can recall this also. You made the comment to us, Mr. Huber, that he can, he can go to Cincinnati, he likes Cincinnati.
He can, to buy it, he can go buy it.
You can buy it for whatever price.
But the prices he charges is.
Cincinnati.
Or which are when you circle.
Okay, I understand that now, you're saying he, you're gonna build a Cincinnati, cause that's what your bid is based on.
And I'm gonna be honest with you, I went back and looked through a couple of those. And if you get those sheets, I don't know how many Hargis runs, but you can run off, there may be ten a day. Okay, on some of those, Cincinnati runs right with Covington, okay? There may be Covington on one of your sheets. It may be a half a cent difference, it may be the same price, that's what I'm telling you.
So how do you do it? When you go pick up fuel to, because the.
I don't pick up fuel, fuel's brought to me.
Okay, so when you are brought fuel.
Right.
Is that locked in at the time it's delivered?
For, the Opus bid it is, it has to be, that day. And I think he had another question at the board meeting, that's why I would have loved to have been here, because, uh, he asked something, I don't know, eleven or twelve times. He wanted to get a better understanding, if I had been notified to be here.
Well, that's, that, I mean, in, in all sincerity, I'm frustrated with that whole thing, and I'll tell you why, because. You, you told me that you and Mr. Huber talked quite a few times, Mr. Huber asked you many questions. Either, I think you said you called Mr. Huber during the meeting, so you had no idea about that meeting whatsoever?
No, I didn't know there was a board meeting going on until I got a phone call from a person that had been at that meeting. No, I had no idea. But back, another thing that we, I wanted to clear up, that, uh, Hargis had a question, or, uh, one day, there was a delivery date on an invoice. You went back to, I remember picking that up by your video. The delivery date say was today, okay? That fuel was not billed until tomorrow, which he said there could be a nickel difference, it could be either way.
It worries that.
Up or down, okay? The reason that could have happened is because I get a phone call at the end of the day, which I try to, when I had this bid, I tried to service it every six, every seven days. In the winter, when you get busier with trips, every six days. I might get a phone call from the bus driver saying, we're out of fuel, or from Mr. Huber, we're out of fuel. So I would come on and bring that fuel that day, after everyone was gone. So I can't, to do my inventory, I have to put delivery date on there, like he saw, the next day I have to put invoice date. To do my inventory, right, what's in the ground, I can't say, well, I took the school a thousand gallon fuel, Southern Petroleum wants to know, where's this thousand gallon fuel that you took?
Is there a reason?
That's the only reason for that.
Did you invite Southern Petroleum here, or was there no reason to invite Southern Petroleum? I mean, cause I keep hearing Southern, he is their representative.
I'm their representative, I'm.
You're their rep, okay, okay, yes.
So you're not both?
No, I work for Southern Petroleum. Most fuel's been gone for fifteen years. And ninety-two, my dad, that's one.
So Southern Petroleum, when they bought out coal lot?
Correct.
So on the invoices, you've seen that you're calling the states, what was the numbers there on, how much?
I didn't go through them, I haven't gone through the invoices, because I don't know how many, he had went back.
Well, I mean, what, what's fair here, I, I mean, do you think you've been doing this one year, six months, ten years, I mean, what's fair here? this one year, six months, ten years, I mean, what's fair here?
It hasn't been done, otherwise, you had the bid sheet, I mean, your open sheets up until the last time, where they just changed, apparently it's bad, there's a reason behind this, that I don't wanna go into this here, I mean, it's personal, it's family, I don't wanna do this here, and Mr. Huber knows the answer to this, I mean, if he wants to take to another.
Hey, this is open session, let, let's.
Well, I'm not gonna go into it, just, I'll take the blame from what was done there, he knows the answer to this question.
It was a personal, family issue.
Right.
Within the Boz family. I, I, I think, I think the blame is.
It's my fault.
I think we, I think we as a school system have to absorb some of the blame, we, we stopped requiring, we stopped requiring the openish sheets to be brought, that's, I think we gotta take some of the blame on that, because every delivery, we should be looking at what he's charging versus what's on that openish sheet, I think that's fair to say, our people got a little sloppy, because we've been doing business with Dennis a long time, I don't know how many years you've had the bid, forever it seems, thirty, forty some, forty years.
They just had it last, I think they were here, so.
I, I would say some of the blame rests on us, that we got sloppy, and Dennis and I have talked, and, you know, if, if we continue to do business, or whoever we, we award the fuel to, um, they're gonna have to bring us that openish sheet every single time, so we can verify that price.
Another thing was the, the last one.
Mr. Boz, it would be fair to say, say you delivered us fuel today, since Cincinnati, or just say, uh, Cincinnati, or, I was looking for.
Did Huber bring us fuel today, that we're saying?
Yes, if he was to bring us fuel today, then we would be charged, uh, terminal rack average, would we be charged a dollar fifty-six, or FOB Cincinnati, I think it was a dollar...
I don't have today's, uh, but I have yesterday's, if you've got it there in front of you.
Uh, dropped five cents off of it, because it moved five point seven cents last night.
It went up five last night, after this price was exactly one fifty-four point twenty-six, and on eighty-seven unleaded would be one fifty-three oh three, at the exact prices that that would be for yesterday.
Yeah, because.
I didn't get today's, uh, when I had left, I've got twenty-four.
And it's what you say on yesterday's?
On Cincinnati, Ohio, one fifty-four twenty-six, on ultra-low sulfur diesel.
And it's on the, uh, unleaded, on the?
On your unleaded, it would be one fifty-three oh three.
Plus tax.
Correct, Mr. Huber.
Is that coming out of City Martin, Marathon, or?
This is Cincinnati, Ohio's bid.
Okay.
If you go to Marathon, it's gonna be a branded price, so you're looking at two twenty, two thirty, what's the tax, the tax on this, twenty-three cents on the diesel fuel, and twenty-six cents, that's all you pay on those.
Right.
And then the bid was thirteen.
We add on how much to that?
Twenty-three for diesel, twenty-six for gasoline.
Twenty-six for diesel fuel, twenty-three for gasoline.
And then you add on whatever his.
Your, your rack price bid.
Mr. Boz, that's twenty-three for diesel, twenty-six for gasoline.
Right, right.
Okay, you, you could say.
Twenty-three for ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, twenty-six for gas, and, uh, the bid rate was thirteen at this time, and that's something that I, I have spoken to my company about, and the rebidding, just, we probably will not rebid, because I don't think it will be fair at this time to do that, we'll probably wait a year.
I mean, clearly, are these your invoices, is this what you fill out?
Right.
Okay, because this shows number two diesel. Correct, diesel, ULSD, MVU fifteen, is that number two diesel?
Right, or number one, if it's branded, but on, the way your billing was, it should have been number two, you're saying?
It should have been number two. Mr. Boz, when I look back.
Number two, I'm saying, or?
What the bid says, compared to the difference of what the paper said, and this paper he has.
What are you talking about, on here?
Yeah.
Dennis, uh, on some of the invoices I was looking at, they actually owed you money.
That's what I picked up from your video.
Yes.
Uh, that, I didn't go looking for that, our, we didn't catch that when we did it, we built it, so it was gone, you know, it's done. That happened, could happen on a daily or weekly basis.
I think my questions have been answered.
You understand what it would be if you got fuel today, right now?
Yes, sir, I mean, I, I mean, I, I can log on my phone, my computer.
Oh, I mean, what would be, for a twenty-six?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
We really probably, the board needs to have a special call meeting on the August fourth, because that's when the next bids are due, and we need to get that bid awarded, so that we can have fuel here for August sixteenth, because our next board meeting isn't until, uh, what, twentieth period?
Uh, twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Mr. Murray, is that on a Tuesday?
The bids here are due on Friday.
I've got a question, would anybody care if we moved that meeting to the twenty-third?
Become a special meeting?
Yes, and I, I know it's asking for a special meeting, but if I have to be somewhere that night at another meeting in Kentucky, would that be a problem with anybody?